Good evening, everybody.
So they don't have to use their muscles.
Evening. It's nice to see so many people here tonight. I'd like to call this meeting of the Town of Pinetop Lakeside Council to order. We have a quorum tonight. I'd ask that you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation.
..........................................................................................
Our Father in heaven, we are grateful for the privilege of gathering together and being a part of this wonderful community. We're grateful for all those who serve in our town government and on the council for the sacrifice of their time and that they put into helping our town be the best it could be. We're still thankful for the freedoms that we enjoy, and we ask a special blessing upon our town that we may continue to receive moisture throughout the White Mountains to keep us safe. And we ask a special blessing upon all those who are being affected by the conflict in Ukraine and Russia, that they may be comforted, that they might feel thy love. We ask thee to bless all those who participate, that they will be respectful and kind, and that we will be able to have a wonderful and task-filled, accomplished meeting this night in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much. Item B on our agenda tonight is called to the public. This is the business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up and called to the public is limited by the open meeting law. The council may just direct staff to study the matter for further discussion and put on a future agenda. Items on the agenda will not be heard in call to the public, and individuals are limited to three minutes. Larry McCormick would like to speak.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you briefly about the Overlook Trail. Since September, early October of 2021, the trail's been closed. I've heard from certain people that it will be open soon. I've heard that there will be a long while. I've also heard that I'll talk to the city manager about it. To date, I haven't heard a word, or I don't think there's been anything in the paper or anything online about the length and time that it'll be shut down. You know, while our tourist season is soon upon us, the Overlook Trail is going to be closed. A week, two weeks ago, we had a festival at the Nature Center, and I cornered John Arona, who was speaker there. And while he didn't want to commit to a certain date and time, he says it's going to be a while, a long while, were his words. The forest thinning process that's being undertaken out there is immense. It's 340 acres. It's a rough terrain. It's going to take a long time. Initially, there were two four-man crews from Escondia. Now, they've been called off, and John Arona has brought in convicts now to speed the process along. I understand the thinning process. I agree with it, and I encourage it being done. The problem is that how long do we want to let one of our, what I would consider one of our beautiful trails, be shut down? It doesn't appear in talking to people, and I've canvassed a lot of people within the city. We haven't heard a word. Does anybody care? Can we? I'm hoping that city council can take the time to try and nail down what's going on, how long, and when we can have our trail back open. I think it's important to the community, and it's certainly important to the tourists. If you've ever been out there yourself, you should know there's a steady stream of cars when it's opened up. And again, we don't know what's going on. So hopefully, you, as members of the council, you can speed that process along and speak to the owners of the property and let us know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. McCormick. Is there anybody else? Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters. Will be enacted by one motion of the council. There'll be no separate discussion unless a member of the council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members, however, may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda. Items removed are considered in their normal sequence unless called out of sequence. As you can see, we have three items on the consent agenda. Were there any questions or comments from the council?
Yep.
Vice Mayor?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. We have motion and second. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D is business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item either before or after the council has had their discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 is a presentation update of the upcoming fire season and the Ready, Set, Go program. Katrina Jenkins, our Navajo County Emergency Manager. And it looks like we have lots of support tonight.
I call them my entourage. They didn't like that, but it's kind of fun for me, you know.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and vice mayor, council. I appreciate the time and attention to this presentation, and I cannot thank my partners enough. As much as I like to give them a hard time, I truly value their time in coming to join me with you this evening. Take a deep breath so I can talk. Woo, this goes fast. Okay, first up, we wanted to talk to you a little bit about what the fire season does look like for this upcoming year. As you know, and I've said this before, fire season isn't just a few short months each year. It is actually a year-round thing. The threat of wildfires is here at all times. Last summer, we did get a significant amount of rain in our monsoons, which was great, but we did not get very much winter precipitation. That being said, a lot of those fine fuels did happen to crop up after those monsoons, so we do have a significant threat. It is not the worst that we've ever seen, but it is still there. So, what that means? We coordinate each year as a region with both Apache County agencies and all of the agencies within Navajo County, including our federal and state partners and many of our local partners that you see with me tonight. We do a preseason, pre-wildfire season kickoff meeting, which we just had about a week and a half ago. At that meeting, we discuss the plans that our region does have in order to be prepared to respond to the threat of wildfire and those kinds of issues. Our law enforcement partners discuss their evacuation plans, should that be a necessary item. Just a myriad of topics. We get a report from our weather service friends so that they give us the latest briefing. And I'll get into that in a future slide, so you can see some of those graphics. Once we do that preseason kickoff meeting, we move into a more regular frequency of meetings where the White Mountain Fire Restrictions Coordinating Group, which is made up of several members, including emergency management, the representative from the Fire Chiefs Association, a representative from the local police chiefs association, U.S. Forest Service, Department of Fire and Forestry Management, BLM, BIA, and Fort Apache Agency out of, off of the White Mountain Reservation. That being said, we come together on a weekly basis, and we discuss the current conditions, what best actions need to be made to mitigate the very real threat of wildfire in our region. And then, once that is done, we discuss with our public information officers what information needs to be published to our public, such as preparedness messaging, mitigation messages, et cetera. And then we do an update for all of the partners. So that is the group that decides, based off of the science and the data, when we do go into restrictions and when we also lift the restrictions. This is a little bit different than other regions. Most of the other counties and regions just follow whatever the Forest Service says. The local Forest Service goes into restrictions, the county goes too. We do it different, and we like that. So we do try to get the messaging out far and wide. We use our print, social media, radio ads, whatever we can, we will use. We value those partnerships to get the communities informed to the best of our ability. We do ask that our citizens, visitors, and guests follow those vetted sources of information, such as emergency management, the county pages, the city and town pages, our sheriff's office, and fire department pages as well. Okay, so when we do have information that needs to get out urgently, we also have what we call a track line. This is a list, a very long list, of businesses, our chambers of commerce, et cetera, that will help us post information about current events, such as the restrictions or any conditions that our citizens and people going into those stores would need to know. Okay. Okay. Here's where we get into the conditions of our upcoming season, our drought. As you can see by this graphic, the picture under the 2022 is our current drought conditions. We're looking a lot better than we were last year, which is the picture on the right. As you can see, there was a lot of burgundy and red. This year, we're more in the yellow and orange. We do have a little bit of red up at the top on the Navajo Nation area. So what does that mean? It's not the worst drought we've ever been in, but it is still a drought. Okay. Ooh, that goes so fast. Okay, there. This is, this next graphic kind of gives you a progression of what the National Weather Service predicts for our wildfire season coming into this area. So as you can see, under May, it's more, I'm sorry, April is on the right-hand side. I've got my graphics backwards. April's on the right-hand side. You can see it's mostly on the southern end of the state. May, you can see it kind of progress up to the north, and it continues to move westward from Texas, New Mexico, through Arizona into California. Later on, you'll see where it dries out in California. Only one. There we go. You can see a lot more red in this graphic, and it just shows that, how the season progresses through the month. June is typically our worst month for this threat because it is our driest. We haven't hit into the monsoons yet, and then July hits, and it all goes back to solid white. So again, we are expecting some above-normal temperatures, but the good news is we are expecting some better monsoons like we had last year. So if we could just hang in there till those July monsoons, we'll be looking really good. And that brings me to my next subject. All right, that's the summary. Again, significant fire danger happens, but we can, together, hopefully mitigate that. So as I was saying earlier, our White Mountain Fire Restrictions Coordinating Group looks at the data that some of that you just saw, which is the fire conditions, the weather forecast. We take that very real data, including the emergency, I'm sorry, the energy release components, actual physical quantifiable data, and make our decisions based on that information. It isn't one person. It is a group, and we find that significantly better because it's not someone's gut feeling as it was years ago. Okay. Up here in this fabulous slide is a picture of all my friends and their seals, just to give you an idea how broadly we do reach in this group. So it's one of my favorite. I forgot the sheriff's office logo. He's yelling at me. Okay. Are you good?
Okay.
Okay. So we do ask that we get some help from our citizens, our visitors and guests in our communities, to be ready to get set and to go when we say go. And by that, I'm going to go into a few more graphics. Sorry. Being ready. Being ready just is a 24/7/365 endeavor. We do have other threats, not just wildfire. We did see last year some flooding because of the monsoons. We have winter storms. There is potential for hazardous material spills, things of that nature that could cause a very real threat to our public. So we ask that they are prepared for any danger all year round. By that, they can have a kit with the essential items, such as prescription medications, important documents, a little extra food, blankets, et cetera. For that information, you can go on ready.gov or the Navajo County Emergency Management website, and we've got all kinds of lists and resources for you. Also signing up for our alert system. The Ready Navajo County Alert System does provide alerts. We only use it for emergencies. I don't do tests. I don't do bake sales. It is something that we have maintained a very high level of priority for, based on I don't want people to become desensitized to those messages and just ignore their phone when they see it because it is going to be a very real threat or public or life safety issue. Okay, so moving on, before I do move on, right now is kind of the prime time for people to get out there. We're starting to see some warmer temperatures. Getting their homes prepared, cleaning up the gutters, checking the roofs, making sure nothing's stored up there, checking under the porches. Moving the wood piles away from your home is a big one, just making sure that your home is defensible. That's a big one for us right now. And then checking on others. Making sure your neighbors and your friends and family have also done their part in making sure that they're ready. Get set. Being set means you've heard that there's something going on in this region, and you're paying closer attention to those vetted sources that we discussed earlier, and that you are ready. You've either moved your kit to the door or into the car, and you're ready to go in case something does happen, and we do have an evacuation order. Sorry. And then go. Go means go. We will have our public safety officials give directions to our citizens, whichever way they need to get out, based on the threat at that time. As we know, we've seen threats come from both sides of this region, up and down. We never know where it's going to happen, so that we expect our citizens to pay attention to the instructions provided. I think that's pretty much it. Oh, please take the animals. We will set up an animal shelter as close to as possible as to the human shelter, if that is necessary at that time. We do everything we can to take care of them. We work with Arizona Humane Society, I'm sorry, in order to help with that. Our local animal control officers help with that. So please, please, please do not leave your animals. Once you've been evacuated, we don't want you to go back in for any reason, so they go with you. Livestock or any other kind of large animals, may you want to consider leaving early when we hear of a threat under that set stage. Go ahead and get those animals out. We open up the fairgrounds in Holbrook. We've also utilized the Taylor rodeo grounds in the past, just so that we have places for those animals to go. And with that, I will turn it over to my friends behind me. Who wants to go first?
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm going to go back here if I can operate this. I can't. So that one drought picture that you saw, one thing to pay attention to is it's still above normal. The fuels are receptive. That means they'll burn. We've already had a couple of fires just in the last couple of weeks. Nice thing about them, we've got the resources. The fuels are in greenup, so easily caught. As Kat explained, those conditions are going to change as we move into June, so we can't let our guard down. One thing that I want to also mention is there's an important date. July 30th is going to be our annual Firewise event, where we're going to educate the community on our wildfire risk. I know you, I'm going to sound like a broken record. The community of Paradise, California, suffered a horrific wildfire. 18,000 structures were lost and 85,000 people were lost. Their fuel type is very similar to ours. They had a 20% humidity in their fuel moisture. That's part of that ERC that we're talking about. We expect to be in single digits in May and June. The only difference between us and Paradise is a wind event, a weather event, climate, and luck. They're 3.81 on terms of a risk scale. We're at 4.61. It can happen here. You've all experienced it with the rodeo Chedaski, and history will repeat itself. I think the difference is that we're better prepared for those catastrophic events that we've gone through, and our communities are preparing our community. We're doing thinning out there, but we're not doing it fast enough. So we look forward to that continued partnership with the town and that hope that in the future, with Mr. Heisler now getting his feet wet as a counselor and Mrs. Kreekbaum, that we'll be able to get the forest healthy initiative back on track and bring something for you as counselors to make a decision on in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, chief. Yeah, go ahead, council views.
What's the date on that again? The...
July 30th.
Just a question. I mean, we anticipate the rains coming the 1st of July. Wouldn't it make more sense to do that in first part of June instead of waiting till after the monsoons come?
So the big reason is, and we experienced this for the Cedar Fire in 2016, we almost had to cancel the event because we did it earlier in the season. We actually made a conscious effort to change it so that it is during monsoon season. And we have a captive audience. Most of our summer visitors, is that what we call them, instead of winter visitors, are here. And that was the message when we surveyed most of our HOAs. That's the season that they like it in, so we capture a larger audience, and that's why we did that. It's also largely available for our school system to make the schools available to us. That's why.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. My name's Randy Chaloy. I'm one of the assistant chiefs with Timber Mesa. Thank you for allowing us to come up here and speak and talk about partnership just a little bit. Katrina, great presentation. Thank you for all the work and effort that goes into this. And I think this just shows about the partnership, the cooperation, because we're not alone in this problem. Fire definitely can impact this community, has impacted this community, and the message I want to get across is prevention. Now is the time, that ready time, to go outside. There's different programs available, Firewise. Chief Morgan, he kind of leads the Firewise initiative in the area, as you're probably aware. But there's other programs available. There's other checklists. Reach out to your local fire departments. I can't stress it enough to all the community members throughout the White Mountains. If you need assistance, if you don't know where to go, to ask about what defensible space is, of course, there's plenty of Google searches that can help you, but call us. We have a prevention division. Both Timber Mesa and Pinetop have prevention divisions. We can send people out to your communities, out to your homes, out to your subdivisions, homeowner associations, and start the conversation. That might lead into a Firewise community. So I can't stress it enough, my beg, my plea to the community is, is help us, right? Because if there's a fire that starts, it's going to start in the fine fuels. That's the receptive fire. It might be good in the drought condition, looking better, but fire can still start in that fine fuel. It's going to get up into the canopy, start showering embers across the community. Our response is going to be there, but a fire, as we know, can move very fast. So if we can get the community to help us, we're going to have a greater impact. Chief Livermore is definitely going to touch on our response, what our response looks like as we approach kind of the drier seasons. But thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Josh Livermore, Assistant Chief of Operations with Timber Mesa Fire Medical. Here tonight to just give a brief overview and answer any questions you may have on the preparation and deployment of local resources as it pertains to wildland, wildfire, forest fire response. So all of the local agencies cooperate very well and work together to ensure our personnel are well-trained, equipped, prepped for the season. I think we approach every season as if it's going to be the worst season on record. The last couple and this one definitely have that potential, as Chief Morgan stated, the risk that exists in the community. So we do ensure our personnel are prepared for that through a refresher process and ensuring that they are well-trained and prepared and also understand the resources available on the mountain. It's not just the local fire agencies that cooperate very well with the state and federal resources and agencies that are here locally and stationed here and available to respond into our district. That said, all of those agencies are struggling for staffing this year. That's a primary concern of ours, is the number of resources available, the personnel available. Seasonal positions are going unfilled this year, a significant percentage of them. So definitely a concern. One of the things that we've identified and we feel is really important because of that, primarily because of that, is that during our peak season, we make attempts to keep resources local. One of the programs that we allow our personnel to participate in is deployment out of the area. We actually have an engine deployed right now in Tennessee and assisting with wildfires there and, you know, and the perfect timing. About the time they get back is about the time we start holding those resources local to ensure that during that peak season, which looks like it's going to be about the 1st of May through the start of monsoon, we want to ensure that we have resources here locally because it only takes a few incidents to start to deplete those resources. So, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have in regards to response or deployment or personnel.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, Josh.
So I feel a little intimidated coming up after a guy with a really cool mustache and hair. Mayor, council staff, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity tonight to come speak to you about... come speak to you about the fire preparation as we go into fire season. As every single one of the speakers have talked about, there's a common theme, it's partnership. And that's absolutely, absolutely paramount in moving forward in a season like this. And we also have a very good group of leadership. We have a very good group of partners throughout the entire region, not just here in our county, but in adjoining counties as well. Katrina, you've all very familiar with Katrina. She's here quite often, but as our emergency manager, she takes these incidents, whether it's a flood, whether it's a fire, what have you, she takes these things very seriously. She's extremely proactive to the point where she drives you crazy with emails and phone calls and text messages, but she's constantly thinking 24 hours a day of what we need to do and where there might be a glitch in the armor or a little bit, you know, another planning process. Very proud of where we are here in this region as far as the partnerships moving forward. As far as law enforcement, our role, you know, after, we are the first responders, I do have to say that, second responders, but in the fire situation here, you know, they go in and they attack that fire, then we end up dealing with the neighborhoods, you know, after the fact. If a neighborhood is evacuated or what have you, we then provide security in that neighborhood or in that area. And we also conduct the door-to-door evacuations as needed. One of the other things that Katrina has done is put together kits and every police agency, every, I think it planned out as every supervisor that's on duty has one of these kits in their cars or have them relatively available. They're all color-coded tags for different statuses of evacuation. The instructions are on there, all the data that's needed to hand off to the person for resources. So it's going to be standardized. That's something we didn't have back in the rodeo fire times. Each region had kind of their own method of doing so. It's, we've standardized it. Katrina has standardized it and trained all the law enforcement in the region on how and what, how these evacuation packets work. So very grateful again, thank you Katrina for that leadership and taking that forward. Also with the county fire ordinances that have recently been somewhat updated, the Navajo County Sheriff's Office is going to be taking a very aggressive proactive enforcement campaign if we end up with somebody with a fire during any sort of fire restrictions. That's, and I want the public to know that as well. We don't like writing tickets, whether people like it or not. It's not the most, you know, the fun thing to do. That's why people love the firemen, is they don't like getting tickets. So, but it's such an extreme danger and it's such a threat to our community that we will take very assertive action when we have somebody that's in violation of the fire ordinances. And there's going to be a big media campaign through social media, print media, you know, the newspaper, the radio and what have you as far as advertising when these restrictions are in place. But it's, we've had some situations where just some extremely reckless burning during red flag during restriction times and it's just, it's mind-boggling that people would take that risk. So we are taking a pretty aggressive stance forward on that. But any questions for, any questions for me?
I have one question on the enforcement. Oftentimes, you know, when we have campfire restrictions, you can still go out in the forest and hike or fish or whatever. It's not uncommon to see visitors with a campfire or a campfire smoldering and nobody around. Is the Forest Service law enforcement out there as aggressively as you intend to be? It seems like that's our missing person here tonight.
So I can't speak about the Forest Service, but I can tell you a little, you know, operationally. There's one individual that's based out of Lakeview, there's one individual that's based out of the Heber area and then one over in Springer. They're spread pretty thin. So a lot of times in the forest area, the sheriff's office will end up taking those calls and taking that enforcement action there. I do know Forest Service is going to be taking an aggressive stance on it, but they just, they don't have the resources to have, like we do with the sheriff's office, you know, having people out 24 hours a day.
So you'll be partnering with them obviously to enforce those restrictions. Vice Mayor?
Just for your information too, the Forest Service partners with groups like White Mountain Open Trails. And a couple of years ago, when the forest was technically closed, they allowed us to go in and see if we found anybody with fires. So we had 15 or so people out and about in the forest looking for violations and we were instructed not to approach them. Call the sheriff, call the Forest Service, call the police, whatever. But they do partner to try to get more coverage.
Absolutely. And we will increase our forest patrols during this time as well, even if a forest is closed. We have forest patrols that will, we mandate the deputies go out and cover so much time in the forest. We also utilize our aircraft to fly around looking for, you know, smoke or whatever and assistance with the fire department and the Forest Service to help spot those things before they get too big. So it becomes a very busy time of year, for sure.
All right, thanks, Brian. Anything else? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Watson?
The Forest Service isn't represented, but are the lookouts going to be men this summer? Do you know?
Yes, they are, starting right after Mother's Day.
They have all but, I believe, three towers that are not functional and they will all be men.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
I just have a couple of quick follow-ups. One of the things that we do want to get across about the restrictions that were discussed, restrictions go for everybody. My analogy is this, if you go to London, you're going to drive on the left-hand side of the road and not the right-hand side of the road because you're in their land, you're following their traffic laws. Restrictions are the same way. Restrictions apply, our laws in this area, the cities and towns have always been a great partner and followed suit with their proclamations about those restrictions, just as much as the county. So we do expect not only our locals, but our visitors and guests to follow those restrictions and we are working diligently to get that information out to other areas of the state that may have visitors come up here so that they understand restrictions apply not just to the locals, but to our visitors as well and vice versa, because we do hear quite often, "I live here, that doesn't apply to me." We also hear, "I don't live here, that doesn't apply to me." And it's like, it applies to all of us folks. So we appreciate the partnership with the cities and towns, our local responders getting the, helping us get that word out. We have a regional public information officer group that helps push that out as far and wide as we can. So that's all I have unless you have any.
Yes.
I have a question. Would you go back to your GO? I saw something on there.
I saw something on there. I'm not sure if I read it right.
Okay. I'm trying. Chrissy may have to come help me. Sorry.
I am a troublemaker. Sorry.
I'm the one pointing it at the TV instead of the computer. While we wait. Ms. Lynn has one?
Yeah, that was it.
Okay, Councilor Kriegbaum, go ahead.
I would, we have at least three people here who are the fire department people. I would like to say a special thanks. I cannot believe that we could do a controlled burn in the center of town. It was amazing. It was wonderful. And I thank so much all of the, I'm sorry. I thought I was.
It's a button on the left.
It was, I'm sorry. It was to say thank you to the people who did the control burn in Woodland Lake Park Track. It was amazing. And 100 acres burned in 24 hours, totally safely, so little impact on the people who lived close. It was just incredible. So I hope that that really has done some good things. It was a wonderful example and I thank you so much to all of the people who were involved.
I couldn't agree more. I was actually out there for the briefing and it's quite the impressive sight to see how many partners helped with that endeavor, so I concur.
Yes, sir.
So your screen on the GO. Could you bring it up?
I'm sorry, I have it on ready. Get to GO. There you go.
There it is. It says you will not be allowed to leave your property.
If you choose, I'm sorry, I should have touched on that. So yes, if you choose to refuse to evacuate and stay at your home, then you are not allowed to leave your property for any reason. You have to be able to.
I knew that that was the case, that if you, once you said you were going to stay, then you can't go. Yeah, right.
We definitely want you to evacuate, but if you choose not to, we will ask you to sign a refusal form and we will ask you to make sure that you stay, we will inform you that you will be required to stay on your property and you will not be allowed to leave for any reason. You don't get to go check on neighbors' pets or go to the store. You have to have your prescriptions, your groceries, everything you need to stay on that property with you at that time.
Okay. And I'd like to go back and add a little bit to what Councilor Kriegbaum said. I appreciate all you guys and everything you do and it's a great team you have there. I know a lot of them and they're really doing a top-notch job.
That they are. I could not agree with you more.
Katrina, do we have to re-sign up for the alerts or once you're on there, you're on there, correct?
Once you're there, you're there. You can, if you have an update to your information, like a new phone number or you've moved and changed addresses, you're welcome to call my office and I can give that number to you. It's 928-524-4163. You can call and leave a message. If I don't answer, please leave me a message because sometimes I'm out and about doing fun things like this. I will call you back or I'll have someone on staff call you back to get that information updated in the system. Or if you've logged in yourself, you're able to go in and do it at any time. That system is great. It allows you to be notified however you choose. So if it's a cell phone, a LAN line, email, text message, it's entirely your freedom of choice there.
Okay, thank you. And this is so appropriate that we were discussing this right here on the cusp of the 20th anniversary of the rodeo Cheddis Sky fire. That's in June. For those of you that weren't here, it was a terrifying time for those of us who were here. And we are so much better prepared now, so much better. So thank you all for all your work that you were doing to help us. Any other comments or questions from the council? Thank you, thank you gentlemen, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you again, I'm sure, July 30th.
July 30th would be great.
Okay, we'll then move on to item D2 is consider the appointment of Timothy Kensley to the Planning and Zoning Commission with the term ending July of 2024. Jeremiah?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. We had two applicants for one open position on the Planning and Zoning Commission and the commission met on March 24th, two weeks ago. And by a vote of three to one, recommended for the council, Mr. Timothy Kensley, who is here tonight, for appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, would you like to come up and introduce yourself and tell us about yourself, please?
Yes, Timothy Kensley, been here for four years. We developed and build homes up here in the White Mountains, plus we own a flooring company in Chell.
Okay.
And my wife, and then we have four grandchildren.
Okay.
Two sons.
Okay. All right, thank you for applying. I do have to ask though, it's my understanding in the Planning and Zoning Commission that you were asked, should you be appointed to Planning and Zoning Commission or you can go ahead and run for Town Council? Now, my understanding is you have submitted a packet with your intention to run for Town Council?
Yes, I did.
So you said you weren't going to do it and now you are?
No, I did not say that. I said that the paperwork had to be in by Monday. Your meeting is today, is Thursday, okay? So if I didn't get appointed to the Planning and Zoning, then I wouldn't have been able to run for council either. So I'm covering myself.
So you won't be running for council then if you're appointed tonight? Is that your thought?
It's my thought.
Okay. Okay. Council members, any other questions or comments for Mr. Kensley? Do I have a motion from anybody?
Okay. Go ahead, Shirley.
I move to approve the appointment of Timothy Kensley to serve for the remainder of the term of David Orris ending July 2024 to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the town of Pinetop Lakeside.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, I will speak up. Congratulations, thank you for serving. We look forward to having you on the commission. Item D3 is consider adopting the town of Pinetop Lakeside Pension Funding Policy for Arizona Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. Kevin?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. What we have for your consideration tonight is the adoption of our annual pension funding policy for Arizona Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, PSPRS. In 2018, the legislature passed House Bill 2097 that requires us to publish on our website a policy to fund our Tier One, Tier Two personnel. For us, it's a police department, it can be a fire department, but for us as a town, it's our police department. The latest policy that I have on the website is our 2019 policy. And as you recall, we spent over a year figuring out how we were going to fund our unfunded liability and we were working with bond advisors. During that time, I didn't bring forth an updated policy because I wasn't sure what we were going to do. So as you also recall, when we had our audit presentation, the only finding they had was that I didn't have this updated policy on the website. So I'm bringing this policy to you tonight. The language in the policy comes from a model that the league puts out. So it's verbatim from what the league puts out with our figures included in there of the assets, the accrued liability and the unfunded liability, which comes from actuarial reports from PSPRS themselves. So what we're asking you tonight is to approve our policy for the year ended June 30th, 2021, which does not reflect the bonds we took out as of July 1st, but whenever that, their calculations are updated, then I'll bring you a new policy. But if you approve this tonight, we can get this policy up on our website.
So then we'll start getting this on the annual cycle again?
Yes.
What time of year will we be doing this? Do you have an estimate?
It's all predicated on when we get the valuation reports from the PSPRS. And I just recently got the updated reports for June 30th, 2021. So until I get those new figures, we can't really update the policy. So as soon as we can, in answer to your question, whenever I get the new valuation report.
So our hands are tied until that's set?
They are somewhat, yes.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Watson?
So understanding that we don't have those new numbers, what do we anticipate our funding ratio will be when we get those updated numbers?
At this point, we anticipate that we're going to maintain 100% funded status. You know, with the bonds that were issued in July 1st, we overfunded a little bit to have a little extra cushion against our liability. So at this point in time, we hope to maintain 100% funded status.
Okay, thank you.
Quite an accomplishment. Any other questions, comments? Councilor Buse?
I was going to make a motion.
Oh, go right ahead.
I move to adopt the pension funding policy for Arizona Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, formally accepting the employer's share of the assets and liabilities under the system based on the system's actuarial valuation report and authorizing staff to post the policy to the town's website as required by Arizona Revised Statute 38-86301.
Do we have a second, Councilor?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously. Item D4 is consider approving the proposed agreement with American Pavement Preservation for Type II Flurry Seal of 94,435 square yards of roadway within the town of Pinetop Lakeside town limits. Melina, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Glad to be here. I'm here obviously in place of Matt, who is on a much-needed getaway, so it's a pleasure that I get to be here with you guys tonight. As the mayor said, we do have the proposal agreement in here for a little over nine As the mayor said, we do have the proposal agreement in here for a little over 94,000 square yards of slurry seal. That's a roundabout average, what we do annually. We do have our five-year plan that we rotate the roads every five years, and they get slurry sealed. We are a year behind because of COVID, as everybody, you know. But we were fortunate enough to, again, this year, so to speak, partner with the county. The county had already, as it states in your packet, had already gone out to bid for their slurry seal, and we were able to piggyback off that contract. So it saves us a lot of time as well as money paying staff to to have to put together a bid and then receive those bids and move forward.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? Is this going to occur in our current budget year?
Yes.
So timing is probably depending on the weather, I'm assuming?
Typically, we start in June. So that's the plan now, that it will be in June.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Vice Mayor?
I'll make a motion. I move to accept the proposed agreement with American Pavement Preservation and authorize Keith Johnson, town manager, to execute all documents pertaining to the agreement.
Let.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Melina.
Thank you.
Move on then. Item D5 is information in public hearing regarding the proposed amendment to Title 16, Chapter 16.24.08, Street Design, and creating a new chapter 12.24, Street Design, in Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places. Resolution Number 22-1611 declaring as public record a certain document filed with a deputy clerk and entitled Town Code Amendments to Title 16 subdivisions in Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places. And Ordinance Number 12, excuse me, 22-447, adopting the Town Code Amendments to Chapter 12-24, Street Design. We have a tag team here, Jeremiah and Melina.
So Matt and I were had a we had a conversation about this, and we both came at it for different reasons, but came to the same conclusion that this should be moved out of subdivision and moved into streets. We're not taking, we're not attracting anything out of taking anything away from what's there. We're just moving it for now, so in the future, they can start to create new standards for roads. We saw roads aren't in subdivisions. This way, it will give us a better handle on the roads for public works, works on the roads.
Absolutely, especially when it comes to to private roads that may eventually have subdivided properties, that we want to make sure that those are up to a standard, which this is the first step for public works in us to get all of our standards dialed in and prepared. I brought with you our we call this the green book. You know, you've got Kelley Blue Book. Well, this is the streets green book. This is standards for everyone that follows typically follows in the country. So we follow this standard. So it's not something that we really have to to go out and create new. We just have to get it to fit what we what we need to have around in our community. So it gives us a minimum standard, too, for what roads need to be built up to for the town to be able to adopt those roads and then maintain them, whether it's a dirt road or a paved road.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? This is a public hearing, so if there's anybody here from the public that would like to address this issue, this is the time. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. So basically, we are not changing anything, we're just moving it. Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Council abuse? We look like you had a question.
I'll make a motion if you're in.
Sure, go right ahead.
I move to approve Resolution Number 22-1611 and adopt Ordinance Number 22-447, amending Title 16 and Title 12 by deleting Chapter 16.24.080 and moving the street design standards to Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, and creating a new chapter 12.24, Street Design. I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Jeremiah, Melina. Appreciate it. Don't go away. Item D6 is consider the approval of Resolution Number 1222, I'm having a hard time with that, dash 1612, for the naming of two private easements to be named Wyoming Lane and Wild Lane. Jeremiah?
Mayor and Council, Vice Mayor, members of the community, the applicant for this request is actually here tonight, Mr. Greg Sarche. He came to us wanting to build a home, and there was no proper access for that. And so we were unable to grant him an address, and so he's kind of been put through the wringer because he couldn't have an address for E911 purposes. Had problems getting a permit with the county, getting a septic, problems getting building permits. And so we came to the conclusion that one of the ways of seeing is that we had him sign and him and his neighbors sign a road maintenance agreement for a private easement, and these are private roads that the town will not maintain. And so that was done, and then this is this is his request to name those two private easements, Wild Lane and Wyoming Lane.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, concerns? Council Krigbaum?
This is not a question. I actually went out to see the property and see where the the road was going to be, and I was very impressed. The new road that has been put in is going to be excellent. It's just beautiful. And then the the roughed-in part to the cul-de-sac was a little challenging driving right now, but it's just a gorgeous area, and I really commend the people who are going to live there, that this is a wonderful place. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Watson?
A couple of questions. One, the signage is going to be done by the private property owners or by the town, or who's going to put the?
The signage will have to be done by the private. It's part of the road maintenance agreement that they maintain the signs, they maintain the road, so it's all on them.
They'll install those signs. It won't be us. The other just and I had this conversation with Keith earlier. I guess recommendation I would have is that having been involved in private roads in the past, that as more people start to develop and live on those roads, all of a sudden there's assumptions that those roads are maintained by the town. I would recommend that in addition to any of these private easement agreements or anything else that's put in place, sometimes as new owners come in and buy those houses, they don't always get these documents that show it's private. So my recommendation would be that we look at installing signs that say these roads are not maintained by the town of Pinetop Lakeside. So as people drive on those, there's not any expectation that either now or in the future, we're going to be doing any maintenance.
Jeremiah, do you want to comment on that?
I think that's a fair enough ask, and I've seen it in the past, and that's the first standard. I can't recall if we captured that language in the road maintenance agreement, but would you be agree with me?
Yeah, that's fine. Whatever you guys want.
I think that is a great suggestion, yes. Yes. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I have a follow-up question to Councilor Watson. Is the maintenance agreement recorded against the lots?
It is, in perpetuity.
Then you can record that, yeah.
Their soul, they would have to get it rerecorded. Otherwise, say Mr. Sarche sells his home, he would still be responsible for it until it's rerecorded by the new one.
That would help his concern, I think.
It would, sure. Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That's a good point. Any other questions or comments? Hopefully, it gets easier. We have a motion?
I'd be happy to make the motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve Resolution 22-1612, approving the naming of two private easements, which front parcels 212-01-036R and 212-01-037, A, B, C, S, X, V, and W. The northern easement is to be named Wyoming Lane, and the eastern easement is to be named Wild Lane.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Before we adjourn tonight, I'm just going to make one little announcement. Blue Ridge High School has two more performances of Beauty and the Beast tomorrow night and Saturday night. I had the privilege of attending last Friday night. Council abuse happened to be there as well. It is absolutely an incredible show. These kids are so professional. Everything about it was wonderful. So I would encourage the community to go out and support our our talented kids and Dr. Dick, who has been working, I think, for a couple of years, getting this performance together. So that being said, of course, Council abuse.
Just I would second that, and in fact, I'm going tomorrow night to see the cast to because there's two different separate casts for many of the characters. So excellent program. I would recommend you go to that.
Very briefly, Council Krigbaum.
And I went the very first night, and they didn't have first-night jitters or anything. It was marvelous.
Yes.
Excellent job. I also have a question. I think I got an email about something that's happening.
We can't.
Okay, good.
Sorry. You can ask the question of Keith or something later. Okay. All right. Thank you. That being said, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
They have to record these.
Did you?
Yes, well, that would be a violation to record it.